Please rise so that we can salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, community staff, thank you Superintendent. The purpose of this meeting is for the Board to discuss and take action regarding the Superintendent's goals for the 2023-24 school year and consider and take action on an amendment to the Superintendent's contract of employment. The Board reserves the ability to go into executive session for an appropriate purpose if so needed. So, um, this particular meeting, um, really part of it falls under the purview of the Vice President of the Board. However, what I'd like to do is just briefly, uh, share with our colleagues, um, and our community, the things that we are doing. We are in the process of transitioning into a new governance. Uh, we recognize that as a board, we have not accomplished, our district has not accomplished the level of excellence that we feel that we are capable of doing. And as a result, we are in the process of undertaking a, a, a litany of things that we're going to have to do as a board in order to set the pace and move things forward. I want to thank, uh, the Superintendent for being receptive to such a thing. Uh, I also want to thank Dr. Will Caressi for the work that he does for us on a regular basis, as well as the staff and Nate for always being there. In this particular meeting today, we have our, uh, support systems with us. Uh, we have, uh, Leslie Grant, who is with the Council of Great City Schools. Please welcome her. Thank you, uh, Leslie, for being there for us. We appreciate you as well.
I will thank it.
AJ Creville may sign on. But I need for you guys to understand that the Council of Great City Schools, and, and you think about it, we're not a real big, large school district when we start talking nationally. We really are not. Uh, but we are big and, and we are the second largest district in New York State, and we certainly are capable of moving things to the next level. And this past, uh, winter, we went through a retreat. And, um, had I known at the time that this book was going to be released during our retreat, I think we would have done it in a, in a more grander way because the work that Ray Hart, who is over the Council of Great City Schools and AJ are doing, I don't think there's anyone that's doing what they're doing. I think they're probably the most important people in this, in the country as far as leading the charge for school boards being effective and producing student outcomes. And this particular book, uh, that we all have, great on their behalf. I'd just like to read briefly a short little paragraph that, uh, talks about, uh, step one, uh, which is the focus mindset. And then I'm going to turn it over to our Vice President, uh, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, to, uh, handle, uh, this part of the meeting. Step one requires that the school board leads from the stance that school systems only exist to improve student outcomes. I want to repeat that, that school systems only exist to improve student outcomes, that student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, starting with the school board, and that the school board exists to represent the vision and the values of the community. Inside of these views of the world, the school board becomes so intensely focused on improving student outcomes by changing its own behavior that it becomes impossible for the school board to be distracted by unaligned adult inputs, serve an interest that is not the community's, or be seduced into creating a culture of blame. By definition, if a school board is not engaged in continuous improvement, improvement routines, or spends its time blaming anyone for lower than promised student performance, then the school board is not doing the work to focus on mindset. And I think that, that summarizes where we are at this point. And, um, Dr. Williams, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to say before I turn it over to, uh, okay, Dr. Brown, but, uh, I will give you that courtesy at this point.
Thank you so much, uh, Board President Belton Cotman. I also just want to extend thanks to the Council of Great City Schools. We went through a very rigorous, uh, couple of days this past spring where I think we all were forced to reflect a little bit, um, and learn a little bit about each other and the role and expectations of superintendents and school boards, as well as a little bit about leadership teams. Um, so, you know, I want to thank the Board for having the courageousness to engage in a process such as this. I do believe it's, it's cutting edge, at least for New York State, and for having the commitment to see this through. I'm excited about where this partnership, you know, will go. And I'm most excited about what it will mean for the outcomes of our students and the possibilities there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Williams just completed her one year, uh, with the district. And she is excited about the next few years as the chief leader of this district. And so likewise, this, uh, the school board, well, I'm sorry, my name is Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, the Vice President of the District of the South East District and the East District School Representative. So as you know, Sharon mentioned this, that we're the second largest school district in the state. We have over 30,000 students. We have a high poverty rate in this city. Matter of fact, last time I checked, we were the fifth, fourth, uh, city in this country. So our goal is to turn our high poverty schools into high-performance schools. It can be done. There's models across this country that, um, show that it can be done. We want to disrupt the cycle of poverty, poverty and excuses. There are models, as I mentioned, across this country that have been successful in these efforts. The question is how? We must have leaders and educators who are orientated towards social justice. They ask questions that cause themselves and others, and, you know, my research them, and others to assess and critique the current conditions in their schools. With that said, it doesn't matter what zip code the children come from. It is our responsibility to teach rigor and high standards of learning to all students. So moving forward, and Sharon kind of touched bases with this, that we're resetting the goals. We have goals, um, at least four or five that with the assistance of the Council of Great City Schools, Leslie's online there, with their guidance, beginning with the 23-24 year, you'll be hearing more about this development in the next few, few weeks as the Board will begin to conduct listening tours throughout, um, the city with stakeholders about their thoughts, their ideas, their vision, uh, for the Buffalo City School District. We want our Superintendent to be successful. We're behind her with school board governance. And so we're all in, all in this together for the sake of the little people that we're going to service through pre-K through the 12th grade. So the purpose of this meeting
and what you hope to achieve.
Is, you know, hopefully to achieve, you know, the forward-thinking of our goals. And Leslie, you can help me with this because this is new for all of us. You know, in terms of how we're going to, you know, impact our goals. You're going to be revisiting the goals that the Superintendent, uh, put together. And we're also going to be modifying them to make sense. We want them to, to, um, work in a way that, um, they are successful in meeting the needs of our young people. Okay. And so, you know, as I mentioned, part of setting goals is what the community wants. Every parent wants their child to succeed. Community, businesses, stakeholders, et cetera, need to be involved also. I know that Dr. Williams did some listening tours last year when she was, were you the interim then?
I was.
She was the interim Superintendent, and she went on in every facet of the city and talked with, you know, various groups of stakeholders, including parents, business people, directors and leaders, et cetera, et cetera. And so she devised a document, a living document, equity for all in all that we do with goals and guardrails. And so we'll be using this, this document as a, um, point of departure, a framework, if you will, to, um, solidify, um, some real goals and guardrails because the guardrails come from the Board. Anything else you want to add, Leslie, to that?
Not added that, but I just wanted to see, you know, what I would love to do is just, um, pick it up and sort of guide us through what we need to accomplish today, based on our conversation we had last week.
Okay.
And thank you all very much. We really appreciate your, um, leadership, President Belton Cotman, in getting your district started with this, and each and every one of you for participating so far in, um, what is the very beginning of a very long process. It's the, didn't get here overnight, going to take a while to get, um, somewhere different if that's where you want to go. So to date, appreciate your commitment to this work. What we are, uh, trying to do today in this meeting is to give the Board an opportunity to settle on goals that you want to evaluate your Superintendent on for this next year. As you know, we discussed in our implementation timeline conversation last week that the, um, process for evaluating the Superintendent, the process, each and every one of the processes you're currently, um, operating under will, you know, we're going to look at that in terms of best practice. But the process for the Superintendent evaluation, we hope to, um, transform into something that is, um, in line with students' performance. So the performance of students in your district is indistinguishable from Superintendent's performance. So, but until we get, uh, the work done to get there, um, what we need to do right now is give you, you all have asked for some assistance in putting together, uh, some goals that you've already got a little bit of a lead on here, um, in terms of what you'll evaluate her on this year. So, um, if any questions at all about what we, uh, is that what everybody thought we were accomplishing today? Yeah. I'm tired of that. Okay. All right. Very good. So, um, not starting from zero, and I really, um, hope that we, I don't think we need to do a lot of looking back here. But what we do have is, um, is this document. And we know that this was created, um, Dr. Williams went out and did a lot of work in terms of, um, hang on just a minute, a lot of work in terms of listening to the community. Our process going forward, is that the Board is going to do that? That would be the Board's responsibility to do that. But in, um, the vacuum of that happening from the Board side, the Superintendent did it. So really appreciate that. And because of that listening tour that you did, you were hearing things from the community. And you took those things, you were hearing from the community, and y'all have put them together in this document, which does, um, and I know, um, that there's some of the, you picked up some of the language from the Student Outcomes Focus Governance work, so appreciate that. What I would like to do is try and, um, try and plug it in, actually extract, if we can, the things that we're really hearing, and then try to put it together in the format that will be most productive, uh, going forward. It will most closely resemble what you can measure, so what your intent is. Um, and I'll start with the first one, um, and just the goal. And if, if y'all want to, if you need to back up on this process or are not, you know, need to, um, take a break, just let me know. But, um, what I see here is you have five goals. Um, and I am, uh, actually considering the goal to be what is written below. There's a title, so eliminate opportunity and achievement gaps, goal one. I'm actually taking the specific goal, um, as what you've written below, the percentage of third-grade students proficient in reading on the New York State ELA test. So that would be what we're calling goal number one, and that's a literacy goal, correct? I want to skip down to goal number two. Actually, I don't. I want to look really quickly because in the aligned progress measure, which I think the intent of that would be the, um, interim goal, but in this aligned progress measure, about halfway down in this first paragraph, we bring out math. And so I just want to see, is the Boards, um, are you taking your temperature? Do you want to set a math goal for this year?
I would like to.
Just, you don't have to answer that yet.
Yeah, the Board. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. So there, so we have reading. We've got the question about, do we want to set a math goal? Um, and then when we look at, um, goal two, which is the gold color, the goal itself was stated as the percentage of four-year graduation, uh, cohort students who complete state and district graduation requirements will increase from 77.47% in June 2021 to 87.14% by June 2025. So that, um, to me says that you want something around graduation, around success after the 12 years you've spent in BPS, correct?
Correct. Okay, the Lord, uh, Leslie.
Second, so before we modify that goal, goal two reads, I mean, this is just for the audience, the percentage of four-year graduation cohort students.
No, she read the access, the yellow part. Access to educational excellence, accelerated learning, enhanced operations and facilities maximization is goal number two. Because we have people that are listening in, they don't necessarily have the flyer in front of them. So if we can read, you know, the, the color, uh, highlights first, before you start talking about them, is what I'm asking.
Okay, but I need y'all to explain to me how that relates to the goal, actually.
Well, that's a conversation, but the issue here is, is that we have people who are, who are viewing, and they don't have this document. So I just want to make sure that they know what we're talking about. Yes, Anne?
I just also wanted to point out, just in case folks do want to see this, this is available on Board Docs and it is a part of the meeting announcement, just in case. And I understand your point. There are some folks who may not be able to see it right now, and that's understandable. But in case they would like to, that's where it is, and it is available.
So, uh, Leslie, respectfully, I wasn't trying to interrupt you. I was just trying to make sure that our listening audience, uh, knows what you're talking about because we went right into it. But, you know, um, if they have this document, if they're looking at it, you know, they see that it is listed as number two. And you're right, we do need to have a conversation about that.
Yeah. So I think, again, i- if we're going to say the goal is, you stated it in terms of a SMART goal, and that's kind of one of the non-starters, is that we are moving towards only having SMART goals. Because value statements, um, I, I would consider the, um, first piece to be a collection of value statements, maybe. We want children to have access to educational excellence. We want them to have accelerated learning. That would be some value statements. Those don't translate to me and the work that we're doing as a goal. So there's no start in, way to get there. So just, what I want to just right now focus on, and we can come back to that, but what I want to focus on is getting, pulling out what you really, what the Board intends for the Superintendent to accomplish this year, okay?
Thank you.
And, and so there's another way to get to that, and I'm open to this. I'm just, I just wanted to take what I could out of this paper that we, we started with first, okay? So again, the goals that you have down, one, we have literacy, one, we have numeracy, and then the third was around our graduation, right? Something about, um, success through, at the end of 12 years. Now, the third and fourth appear to be identical. If there's some, anybody wants to, um, add a little bit about, you know, is there something I'm not seeing? Those two seem to be exactly identical, except for four has a few more, um, of these progress measures.
So prioritizing safety, security and wellness.
Go to the goal itself.
Number long-term out-of-school suspensions will decrease from 1,212 as of June 20 to 1,072 as of June 25. And then go forward. They're very similar.
But there are more aligned progress measures, I believe, under the amplifying all voices and cultivating trust. So there's a way that we could select one of the ones that is not identical to the value statement in number three.
So let's, I want to stay out of the progress measures for now, just to, if we can just stay at the level of the goals right now. So three and four, again, that what's, um, written down is three, goal three and goal four, not in the colorful thing, but the, what you've written down is the SMART goal itself, or I did, so we can, so there's just one of those, really. And I want to propose that, actually, perhaps that is a guardrail. That may in fact be an indicator, an interim of one of your guardrails. In your guardrail statements, and I've skipped over this intentionally because I don't want to do, um, I don't want to get into the guardrails right now, but you do have a Student Support Intervention System guardrail. That seemed to be something that came out as a clear value this, um, community wanted us on the back of the first page. And so I'm suggesting that perhaps this, um, if you wanted to track the long-term, um, out-of-school suspensions, that would be an indicator, an interim for, um, one of your guardrails. Um, and then we did have, uh, we had a conversation this morning with AJ in terms of that. I'll come back to that. But, um, any heartburn about moving that out right now? All hearts and minds? Okay. All right. Now, goal five, it's, um, about partnerships here. The goal itself is stated as a participation goal in, um, extended learning time and summer enrichment programs. And that is about a participation piece. And I'm, again, wondering if, like, is the intent of this to ensure that we have, back to the guardrail page, that the community partnerships are being, um, utilized? And is that the intent of this? Or is there a specific outcome? And again, the goals that we want you to set are only about student outcomes. Is there a specific outcome that you were trying to get to in terms of, um, students and their extended learning time? And I'm maybe suggesting that that is an interim.
My understanding when we did this is that our goal was not to try to, uh, have student loss, uh, learning loss during the summer. And so that's what the ultimate purpose was, that was how I understood it. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so that's, the, the learning loss piece was the issue, uh, with that particularly coming off of COVID.
The way that I read it is, we're trying to make sure that more students participate in these, but for me, a goal would be their participation, what is the result of that participation? You know, what are, what are the outcomes of that? So I see this as maybe the beginning of the goal, you know, like an objective to get more students in. But the goal is to, you know, measure the learning loss and where we were and where they are now. And, and I'm, I'm not sure how to word that, but I feel like this is kind of, I, I don't know. I, I feel like I'm not the measureable. This is what we're supposed to get to, is getting more kids into the programs. And with that, what is the goal? Am I off base on that, Leslie?
So I think, again, in terms of a student outcome, what do you want students to know or be able to do? Just really keep that in turn, right? That's the only thing we want to concentrate on for a student outcome goal, what we want students to know or be able to do. And so does this seem like something you want students to know or be able to do? This, the, the way it's currently written feels like you want them to show up. So, um, I would, I would really shy away from any kind of participation or attendance as a goal. That's not an outcome, that's an input.
So I, I believe it's more of like an initiative. Our, our goal is to increase literacy, increase numeracy results on those standardized assessments, and to improve graduation rate. If we have an initiative that we're providing more access for our students, our English language learners, or just extended school ti- uh, after-school time, summer enrichment, then it would be an initiative that's helping us reach that, those first three goals that we just discussed. So I don't know if it maybe needs to be worded more, again, like a guardrail.
So, yeah, Anne?
Question is, what are students, what do you want to see students be able to do as an outcome of extended learning time? And that feeds right into academic achievement.
So the literacy and numeracy.
Exactly. Or if we have X number of students who are below a benchmark or below a level that we're trying to measure, we'd want to see that if they, if they participate in extended learning time and summer enrichment program, we have a certain percentage who then come up to, or that's how we're looking at it. Would that be accurate?
Yeah. And so I think Larry's instincts are correct. I think that, um, where, where this feels like it should live is in an interim, is a way to get somewhere, right? This is part of the solve, that the Superintendent would decide, hey, in order to, you know, increase the literacy and the numeracy, I'm going to have students participate in these, you know, after-school partnerships, um, the summer enrichment program. So again, it's a tool to get there, right? So my, all right, so that would be the five that you currently have down. And my, um, recommendation would be, we have sort of refined three of them in terms of things you want to hold. I would say, I would suggest, we recommend one to five max, and if you're doing the, you know, the big, the full picture. I would recommend you stay here in this mindset right now with these three, and we look at refining these. You have, these are not the big, these are not the big, you know, the big thing we're going for altogether. This is, um, a year's worth of work for the Superintendent to start. She's got, um, you know, is, has started, um, gathering some data on these already. This is a good start, I think. Um, the system is already focused on this a bit. And I think really narrowing down the scope of what you intend to charge her with right now and, and really doing the work around accountability, that would be my recommendation. So it is up to you.
Okay, good. Yes, they understand. It's okay. Yes, they understand.
Are we, any, any heartburn or objections about trying to refine three?
I could have a concern. Um, as long as we include, uh, the, um, partnership piece in something so that we continue building our relationships with our partners within our community, that I think that's paramount, um, because, uh, they need to know that that, that's the priority of the Board.
So that probably should come in guardrail, right? As an operational action that occurs to do that? And it would be an expectation. And this is something, um, I just want to say here, and I can remind you every time we meet, five times. Because you are setting something out, or because you are pulling something out and establishing it as a, you know, this is a, you know, house on fire priority, that's what we're trying to get you to do. These are wildly, wildly important goals. These are the things that unless they happen, unless the community sees these things happening, you're, you're not moving forward. That does not mean for one second that every other thing that needs to happen to get the system straightened, rolling in line to accomplish those goals isn't going to happen. But that is the Superintendent's purview of how she's going to align the, those, how she's going to align the departments, how she's going to align her resources, how she's going to align everything to make these goals happen. So I just want to, I know that it, it happens frequently that there's a panic that, you know, oh, well, nobody's going to care about buses anymore if we, you know, choose these things. So I just want to put that out there for yourselves, for the community. I'm happy to remind you about that as much as you need. But, um, partnerships are going to be an integral part of getting this work done. And so, yeah, and so I just, just wanted to say that, and in terms of that. Any, so again, any heartburn about having three goals, numeracy or literacy? Any, so again, any heartburn about having three goals, numeracy or literacy, numeracy, and the getting to 12th grade successfully and out the door?
That's a good start. And, you know, I have to go back and acknowledge the fact that Dr. Williams and Dr. Rivera took a stab at this last year in October, and it was presented. This is probably the first time since I've been on the board that we have, have had some tangible goals and are now moving forward with them, that it will make sense and, and it's doable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, like we said, the fewer you have does not mean the fewer things you care about. It means you care about those things more. And so the fewer things that you charge her with doing right now, the more intensely she can focus on those, and her, the outcome of her, the likelihood of that outcome happening is greater. So you are, by holding yourselves tight on this and saying, this is good, we'll do this right now, gives her the intentionality and the, the resources to concentrate on those things this year. Again, this is, you know, this is great. The first time is kind of this sort of cart before the horse process of doing this little mini setting. We will be coming back and doing this, you know, in a different way. But I do hope, you know, maybe you will take, you know, take it forward that having a smaller number is really, there's really power in that. So anyway. All right, so what I would like you to do is think about these goals now. For the literacy goal, the way that it is written now is you're talking about a percentage of third-grade students. So the entire third-grade class, right, you want them to show proficiency. And you've given a measure by which you're going to measure that, the New York State ELA test. So that's a summative test, end of the year. Correct?
Right.
All right, so I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, and I'm just throwing this out there. You have, the title of this document and the top guardrail you have both include the word equitable. And that's something, it's so fun, everybody throws it around, and, you know, equity, equity, what are you going to do about it? So my question to you would be to think about this goal. And is there a way, and again, nothing is not going to be done because you choose to focus on something. The tighter you focus on something, the more likelihood of it being done. Is there a way that you could focus this on a population of the third-grade students? The economically disadvantaged, the free and reduced lunch population, the, you know, children of color who traditionally have been underserved for many reasons. So if there is a, I would like you to have a conversation about that as a board, and then also in terms of growth instead of proficiency. A proficiency goal is, we want students to be, you know, like here. And so if your goal is the whole population, you want everybody to be here, getting the students who are, you know, two or three grades behind caught up, is that your priority? Should it be your priority, or do you just want to move everybody up? So I need you all to talk amongst yourselves a little bit about that.
Okay, so you want us to do that now?
Yep.
Okay. So who want to be first? Want us to talk about the population of students? And that's a mouthful, because we do have, you know, children of color, we have kids who are two or three grades behind, maybe one. So we're looking, you know, we have a number of kids who are proficient, because the way this read, that the percentage of third-grade students proficient in reading, what about the ones who are not proficient, for example?
So how are we going to break down? Who, you know, what group was concentrating on? Because I feel, I feel like, I appreciate you, Leslie, because you really can bring things to a level where, you know, it's, it's very comprehensible. So do we want to just move the whole third grade up? Or do we want to make sure that everybody's caught up, and then maybe we go, you know, to that, or how do, how do we do that?
And again, I just want to make sure, this, this is not about leaving anybody behind. This is about really hyper-focusing on one piece, okay?
Right, right, so I'm definitely, where the equity piece really comes in, and for folks who, you know, equity and equality and all of that, this is a real lesson, so pay attention. Where we're trying to move people, you know, to, to be at this, at least equal with each other. So how do we, how do we measure that when every single group that you mentioned is a focus for, for us as a district? And each one of those groups have, you know, their, their hurdles, you know, to get to where they have to go. So how do we, as a board, help figure out with the superintendent which groups to, to work on, which groups to concentrate on? I really feel like that's been the hurdle for almost everything since day one, seven years on this board.
And I think systemically, you know, over the years, when we talked about, and this is a reality, we got young people who are in high school who are still functioning at the sixth-grade level. And I know we do. And we still have, you know, graduates who graduate that may not be proficient to have graduated, but they have, right? So when we talk about remediating children when they go to college, for example, too many of our children are in mediation or rem, you know what I mean? Trying to get top at a college level, and those ish, you know, you're working higher ed. So going back to what Jen is saying, perhaps it would be good to, you know, look at children who aren't at the third grade. If they're not at the third grade, we don't want to push them through. And so it is our responsibility to ensure that a third grader is proficient, all of them. I mean, some are going to be more proficient than others, naturally, that's the case. But I don't think it's an easy.
If I can just jump in, and I just want to say, I mean, this is a really important question that you're asking, and I, I don't want to just make a major quick, you know, recommendation. I think, you know, it's going to entail delving into some data, so that the board is positioned to make an informed decision on who, which population has really been, you know, disenfranchised or left behind, and then deciding which population they would like to focus in on, if it's not all third graders growing at some level.
I agree, and when we go through the full process, that's actually a step, is that your team will put together a comprehensive needs assessment? Like, where are we now, right? So that the board can fully understand that. So thank you for bringing that up, I was actually going to try and punt to you in a minute to talk about, you know, like, what that looks like. If the board wants to do something, you can leave it here, it's all third grade, if you wanted to do something that was more aligned. I know that we're on a, we're on a time crunch because this process didn't happen earlier. And so I will leave that, that really needs to be a conversation you all need to have. And Superintendent Williams, I think, just, one of the things I had for you that I should have said initially was, in terms of, well, all of you really, in terms of this process. So I know we are here today, there was, there's a need to get your goals set for your ability to get your staff doing what they need to do to accomplish this. One of the things, I think, the process, in order to get this done correctly, yes, there needs to be some input if they're going to adjust this about which population, you know, they really feel the need to do that with. The second thing would be that you're, you would develop interims, right? You're going to develop, this is what I think are going to be predictive of making these moves over this year. So you're going to develop the interim goals to make these happen. And I appreciate the, you have a lot here on these aligned progress measures. I would recommend hearing everything back to, no more than three things you think are really going to, you know, move these. You're going to be doing other stuff, clearly, at the district level. But in terms of what you're reporting back to the board on, so we're going to report back to the board periodically on, you know, like, here's what we're doing, you know, you've got your formative data that you're getting back through the year. So you're going to have to, we would have a process, and I'm happy to work with you as soon as possible, on developing the interims to support these goals. So just knowing that if everybody thinks it's like over today, I don't think that's a, you know, a healthy thought to keep carrying forward.
Okay, so Larry, start.
So the, one other thing I want us to also be mindful of, I just read in our municipal publication that state assessment results for last year are going to be coming out later than usual, well after the year, school year starts, and they're changing cut scores, which determines how, which students are proficient and not proficient. So we have to be mindful of that. It doesn't stop us from moving forward today, but it's going to probably change our numbers and maybe our percentages as well.
Over the next nine months, Chair, Kathy?
Yes.
So from my perspective, I think we, we know that there are a group of students that are underperforming in this district. So what I was thinking about was, why not take like a group of students, students who are receiving the free lunch program, or, and utilize those as our base? Because what we do know is that when we bring resources into the school, all children are elevated. So it's not a situation where we're just focusing in on children who are on the poverty line, because that's basically what it turns out, who are economically disadvantaged or whatever. And from there, if we start working with the, those that need the most work, you automatically elevate everyone else up in the equation. That's, so for me, yes, as we go forward, we're starting September, we plan to end by June of next year with all the work that we're planning on doing based on our current timeline, we will have the opportunity to look at that. But we know across the board that they, that from the data, if you've been keeping up with it over the years, that there is a, a group of students, a large group of students who need to be elevated. And so I don't see where it's a hard lift, is what I'm saying. From Cindy, you're shaking your head and you haven't said anything on the.
I'm listening.
Okay.
I agree with you. No, I think that that could be a good substance to use, that is broad enough, and hits all of the areas that was suggested by Leslie as well, in many cases. So I think it's a good starting point, knowing that this is a transition year. So we're setting this for this year, we're going through this process and being as thoughtful as, as possible, but we're setting ourselves up for a more formal experience that will happen, you know, next year at this time. So to me, that it would be worth, and then given our timetable as well.
The only thing I would suggest is you may want to look at another measure besides the New York State ELA test, only because we won't get those results until well after the evaluation happens in June, so we may want to look.
So what would you recommend we to use?
It depends on what grade level, you know, we're looking at. We have interim assessments that we use, the DIBELS and, you know, tests like that, that we're giving, giving at the beginning of year, middle of year, and end of year.
Do you feel DIBELS is more a, a better tool to use than New York State, period? Because you do the begin, the beginning, you do the middle, and then you do the end, right, with that tool?
We do, we do.
Can I ask a question?
It's, it strictly assesses reading, where the ELA assessment assesses reading and writing.
And is DIBELS formative versus, is it a summative at the end of the year?
It's.
It's formative, isn't it?
Formative, yeah.
Okay, so I would recommend having a summative, something summative for your goal. Formatives can be the interims.
There is an end of year DIBELS.
Would you introduce yourself to her, please?
Hi, my name is Laura Smalsky, there is I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Accountability. So DIBELS is formative, because we have a beginning of year, a middle of year, and then an end of year. The end of year really could be used as a summative assessment. And we could probably discuss goals that talk about gap closing rather than, you know, just proficiency. Because we have that baseline from the beginning.
That's what I was going to ask about. So DIBELS would be appropriated if we're measuring growth over the course of the year, because we'll see what changes from the initial to the, the final.
And also, I would recommend that DIBELS is not the only thing we would use, because it's not on grade levels. So we have DIBELS for certain grade levels, we also have I-Ready. I-Ready, we do the same thing, beginning of year, middle of year, end of year. We have it for ELA and math. And it would then cover, between DIBELS and I-Ready, we'd be able to cover grades K through eight.
Awesome.
And then high school, we have I-Excel, that does the same thing.
High school is what?
I-Excel.
I-Excel.
So are, is there a way to cover writing skills as well? If you're concerned with reading, reading's really important, writing skills are really important too, or are we getting into leads at that point? Are there too many? Yeah, okay, too many goals, so we'll have to look at that.
Yeah, currently, you're, again, you, you called out reading on this, and the third-grade reading, I mean, is it all important? Yes, it's all important. But again, trying to get you as narrow as possible so that she can do as much as possible.
And then all I want to say on that point then is, I would like us to be mindful of that moving forward when we do our next set of polls. Instead of, we're working on reading first, if that makes sense, not to lose track of writing.
Okay, I thought reading and writing went hand in hand. Just excuse me to think, that's how it was when I went to school. Okay, you did not read and you did not write. We wrote it when we went to a, yeah.
For the reading groups who needed it, and I just, you know, I, I.
Okay, can I ask a question, because maybe I'm, I'm, I'm so broad-minded. So when we say just we focus in on the third grade, that makes me nervous. And the reason it makes me nervous is because I'm thinking about the students that, the other students that may not be being focused in on, or whatever, I don't know. That's what makes me nervous about just picking third grade, okay? Especially, thank you, especially when I, I feel that there's a need for us to look at growth period in the district in certain areas. So it's almost like, if you're, if you're not teaching a third-grade class, you're not going to be reviewed, and that's how I feel. And I, and maybe I'm wrong for thinking that, but that's what my concern is.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to go back, I'm going to keep saying that thing. Just because the board is not putting this down on paper as one of their, you know, almighty priorities, does not mean it is not going to happen. So there better be teaching and learning going on at every grade level in the district, because every bit of that's going to show up at some point on whatever goal you set. So she is not going to step off, I trust you're not stepping off, running buses, teaching, you know, the fourth grade, teaching fifth grade. And so I think that is a, a level of trust you have to put that, again, the, the rest of the system. But, so if, if all things considered, everything's just going as it is right now, you guys are totally happy, or do you want something different? And if you want something different, we got to pick out something specific that you want to focus on.
So I think in fairness, can I speak on this? Because we talked the other day about not doing anything radical until we go through our full training. And so this is the tool that we were going to use, and I, and I think in fairness to all, that we stay, you know, focused in on this tool, and that we just work with this tool at this point.
Yeah, I'm not proposing moving off that at all, but it, I'm just trying to extract the, extract the pieces that y'all need to focus on, and then let her build what she needs in order to get you there.
I agree.
Okay, so what does that look like? Is that a guardrail? Is that what we're talking about?
I need you all to, I need you all to focus on this reading goal.
The goal, okay.
Yeah, so if you can help, focus on the reading goal. If you want to leave the reading goal as it is, we still need a beginning. We need beginning data. If you want to tailor it in some way, incorporate some more equity.
Okay, so let's try to come up with a, a, a goal that we all agree on. Okay, so do we want a question? Do we want to focus in on the third grade? Or do we want to focus, so do you want to leave it just at third grade?
Yes.
Yes, for now.
So we have that for now. Are you in agreement that we should look at a group of students? Okay, do you?
You got to look at a population.
Do you agree that a population of students that get to reduce the free lunch?
Economically disadvantaged.
Economically disadvantaged. What do you, and how do we define economically disadvantaged?
Well, that's free, the free, free and.
Free lunch.
And it, it really, that's a lot of kids. It's about.
That, that means nobody because most of our.
Yeah, that's true. We got to, we got to give us more than that. More, what's the answer?
How do we determine which students are economically disadvantaged or a percentage?
It's two different, so there's two different things. I think we're using interchangeably, free and reduced lunch and economically disadvantaged. Economically disadvantaged is a definition that comes down from.
The stats.
Yes, so that's just like based on income level. But then you have free and reduced lunch, which takes that into consideration, but there's other factors that would provide a child with free and reduced lunch. And if this makes the conversation easier, economically disadvantaged, we know now, I can tell you what the percentage of economically disadvantaged students is. Free and reduced, we really don't get a good handle on till the end of October because it involves certification through Medicaid and the state and other things that we need to process. It takes a couple of months to process before we really get a good handle on who all of those students are.
Okay, so, okay.
So, so are you saying that? I thought I heard you say you had the numbers now.
For economics.
Yes, actually. Okay, so yeah, I, I would support that.
Do you guys like that?
Yes, so my question is with, when you say economically disadvantaged, when we have such a transient population, right? And we're not really sure of what incomes are or whose, you know, it's hard to get a hold of people. Those are the children that we really need to focus on, the ones that we really don't have all the data on. So how do we, how do we focus on them? They, there isn't, to put them in a category, do you see?
I do. Economically disadvantaged category?
Yeah, does it?
We know that they get coded as that when they register within the district. It's the free and reduced lunch that takes a lot of, a job.
So I can see who's not, you know, who's.
Okay, I think that's a lot, that's a lot to notice.
So maybe grandma and, okay.
So economically disadvantaged is a more stable and year-round category. Free and reduced, if there's.
So we can catch that from that cat.
Better than all of them.
So it sounds like that that would be a good gauge for, for it to really look at the economically disadvantaged population for third grade, for goal one.
Okay.
Okay, so now do you want to, percentage of economically disadvantaged third grade students, do you want to show growth or proficiency?
Growth.
Or the, you had mentioned it, the, a gap closure measure.
So can I ask a question about that gap? Because don't, we, we have children that are very transient, a large population of our children. Wouldn't that impact that growth?
Yes.
Okay, so what would be the best way to monitor children that are in our district from your perspective?
So the children, okay, so two things. I know we're talking about third grade, but we don't have any data on them, reliable data on them from the lower grades.
The transient population you're saying?
Well, no, because the kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, they don't, they don't. They don't have tests, right? Like a lot, and third grade is when it really kicks in. So the guardrail aspect of it is kind of missing for third grade, but like a sixth grade, you could start monitoring it third grade and then have.
Oh, it's a bunch of calls.
You could watch them as they come up as guardrails, look at their levels, and then in iReady, it says if you are at grade level, one grade below level, two grades before a level, but you can't get that data on a third grader because they don't take the test early enough, does that make sense?
So in order to measure growth, we need to have the baseline and then watch it.
So the baseline would be sixth grade and we would watch it from there? Is that what, no?
I think, I think it might be worth having a discussion to move the goal to a later grade and, and then you have guardrails in the lower grades where you're collecting data.
For the.
Not, not that third grade be the goal, right? Because you need to collect data to get.
Oh, good point.
Okay, so that could be there and then.
Clarifying question with that.
What's your thought?
Do we, so for students going into sixth grade, do we have access to what their third grade data was?
Yes.
So we can measure it now.
Yes, the only caveat we have is the tests have changed. So for example, DIBELS used to be DIBELS next, and now I think it's DIBELS backwards reversed. So it might not be, it might be apples and oranges.
Okay.
And we've only had iReady for, this will be our third year, maybe fourth for math. We had it a year earlier for math. So as long as those tests, they stay stable, yes, we have that. But then we can also factor in their state test levels as well.
So I just have one wonder. We've already identified third grade was the year. So we started a lot of work with this year's first graders because we said by 2025 is when we will be measuring them. So for this year, we've poured a lot into the Orton-Gillingham piece for first graders. We made sure that they did summer programming for our first graders, hoping that we could continuously measure them so that by third grade, the proficiency piece would be there. So it would just abandon us doing what, you know.
No, I don't do that. I'm just worried about data. Because we don't, we don't, we just don't have a lot on those little. But maybe guardrails could be the higher grades to make sure they're keeping up with that progress.
Okay.
So within my committee last year, where we looked at beginning, middle of the year, end of the year data, and it was, when Ann did the presentations, Ann Balachelli, she did pre-K kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, I believe. And she, she was using DIBELS and or iReady.
She's using iStation for pre-K, which we, I don't think we can use anymore, which is a whole separate thing, we have to do something different. But for K one and two, she's using DIBELS, I believe, and iReady comes in at third.
So we, I mean, because we were looking at data, we were seeing where there was growth and where there wasn't. So to me, that was pretty reliable data.
That's what we were, that's how we were measuring.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Okay.
So I, Missy, I think, I am, I'm concerned because I know it's broad, but our students and, and just measuring according to tests is not what our students, you know, that's, that's not how you measure a, a whole child. And this whole child approach that we are doing, that we're consciously doing, but we're spending so much time and energy right now concentrating on tests and the data around the first test. I'm looking to see where the measuring aspects are when it comes to our own behaviors and things like that that affect a student in their learning. They can do great on the test, but they can be a great student and just have a bad day. And that test is going to reflect only that. So for me, I was digging the third grade piece only because it's measurable. Every class and every teacher knows that third grade is where, if you're a second grade teacher, you are truly preparing them for that third grade kind of deal. And then if you're a sixth grade teacher, you're like, okay, from third grade, now you're reflecting, you're trying to build off that. I get maybe fourth grade, fifth grade, but I feel like sixth grade is just way too late in the beginning to be making these, you know, assessments. And I'd really like to dive into how do we measure, not, it's not either or, it's how do we also measure all the other components other than just pure data and testing? And we talk about New York State, how many families opt out of New York State? So you're not giving data on them, you know what I mean? So I'm just concerned about if we're going to look at this, these children, we're going to try and capture.
Just want to jump in. I'm sorry, Jen. Yeah, no, I just want to make sure, again, what you're trying to get to is the student outcomes, what students know or are able to do. And the, the behavior piece, the whole child piece, like, I don't think they're going to get there without those structures and supports. But at the end of the day, what you have to have is you have to have some way to understand and assess a student's competency around standards from student to student to student, from classroom to classroom, from school to school. And so without any kind of standardized test, without them, you know, participating in that, you don't have that understanding. So unless you're, you know, like, I just want to caution against that. I know that's a, you know, like, like, let's measure students another. You can measure them any other way you want, but I think that the need for a standardized assessment about their proficiency around, around standards is very important. So I just want to make sure what y'all concentrate on is something that is, you know, like, measures what your students in, if you're going for third grade, what do they know about reading? What are they able to do about reading, right? Like, so what do they know and able to do? Rather than how they're getting there. And again, those are supports that they're, you know, that they're getting in order to be able to do that. And I don't, yeah, I don't, there's not anything that, you know, can do in parents who want to opt their kids out of the test, so anyway.
It looks like we've made some real, you know, progress in a short period of time when we look at the goal for third graders and we believe that the economically disadvantaged group will be the focus for growth. And or, did we say growth and efficiency or growth?
No, just growth.
Growth.
Okay, and so since the work has already been done, it should be okay because there's already work that she's doing and that, and you're comfortable with that, Doctor?
Yeah.
Okay, so she's comfortable with that?
Yeah, especially with some of the data that was, you know, presented throughout the year and your student achievement. And, you know, Doctor Williams talked about, you know, some of the DIBELS assessments that's been going on with this group. So I think that we're in a good place.
So I would, I just want to get clear on this, though. The percentage of economically disadvantaged third grade students shall show, and then you need to have, you know, we have to have a measure. So do you want, is that measure of growth, grade level plus? Is it a, you know, a grade level and a half? What is that measure of growth that you're looking for? And.
So, so we have to be careful here, right? Based on the conversation this morning with AJ and what he shared, is this the time to share that? Leslie, where he talked about if, if we're working specifically with a, a, a number or if we're working with.
No, no, that, yeah, I don't think that was here. That was definitely in the, in the.
Right, but it still applies up in here, doesn't it?
Yeah, long-term student, so, yeah, yeah, I don't want to, don't want to go with a number for the population. Yeah. But, yeah, we will hit on that, but.
So what are you comfortable with? You've already got the goals in place. You're saying that there should be a percentage of growth, an increase.
How are you measuring it?
Well, I think once, I'm sorry, Leslie, but I think I heard Doctor Williams say that once the board is presented with some current data, then we're able to come up with a percentage. Because she's worked on that already.
Do you want to weigh in, Doctor Williams?
So it depends, I guess, on, you know, the specific assessment that we select. Because if we utilize like iReady, there is a beginning of year, which will show where the third graders are at the start of the school year. Then there's the middle of the year, and we're constantly collecting data all throughout the year. But then there is that end of the year assessment. And so if we determine how much growth we want to see or how much of a gap we want to see closed, then we would be able to do that. But if we choose a New York State test, the data usually does not come back until October, sometimes even later.
What, how would, what would you think? What we're asking really here is what would be the percentage of growth that should be expected?
So when we did this, we looked at 4%. And the board was comfortable with that. We wanted to see 4% growth over the years from 2023, 24, and 25.
1% each year?
Four.
Each year? Okay, four each year, 4%. And that gets you where we need to be by 2025?
I don't have offhand where we scored the third graders for iReady at this point. So we'd have to look at that because that wasn't something that was included in here. But we can pull that data, and so if we're at, let's just say if we're at 50% right now, that's, you know, scoring at a good level there, then, you know, we would have to psychometrically look at what we need to get this year and what we need to get next year in order to get us to where we need to be.
And so that can be the work that we do for next year. I mean, for this next school year goal. Because what we don't, we're not trying to do is like a gotcha moment or.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm.
We want it to be, yeah, we're not trying to do that.
Put, put the brakes a little bit on hammering out the starting point, the ending point. What we're trying to do right now is set a goal that y'all are comfortable measuring her in terms of her evaluation over this year. So let us, we, we've got this. You would prefer something that is a little more narrowly focused on equity for third graders? We need to get together with your team and talk about what those specific, what is the best way to measure that? The board is interested in understanding the growth of those students? So just, am I correct there?
Right.
Is that a?
Yes, that's a priority.
All thumbs up? Okay.
Yes, all thumbs up.
Okay, all right, so if we have those buckets set, again, our term is going to be very short here, so I just want to get, we'll do a reality check with you in terms of past.
Let's just do it. Let's just agree 4%. She's already working on a 4% scenario. Why not just, because this, we're not trying to do anything extraordinary until we go through the training.
But that 4% was based on the New York State ELA, correct?
No.
But it was also.
No, I'm sorry.
I believe it was based on all third graders. Now we're not talking about all third graders, we're talking about.
Yeah, so let's, let's, let's do a little, I know this is going to take longer than y'all want, but let's get it right, okay? I don't want the, yeah.
I would make the suggestion that we look at historically, what has been the rate of change in this subset of folks, of students, and then set a goal.
Okay.
Here to that, because then we'll really know what change is happening.
And again, that, what we're looking for here is some institutional, you know, like stretch, right? This is not, everybody's not comfortable in their same, you know, there's, there's got to be something that, you know, requires a little bit of adult energy to, to make this happen. This is not the usual trajectory. But to your point, Ann, I think having an understanding about what it has been for this population over the past few years, and again, sort of understanding what we've all been through, that's a, we'll pause there, okay? For, and so we need to set up, we'll do that as soon as we can after this meeting with you. Doctor Williams, a time to discuss. Sorry?
Bless you.
Bless you. Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, so then for the, for the numeracy.
Same thing.
Still third grade?
Same thing.
Same grade.
Okay. So can I throw something out here? Because when, when we talk about looking at what this group of population has been able to achieve, I get a little concerned about that. Because I'm reminded of the scenario where the teacher walked in, didn't know that the kids had special needs and were underachievers and had high expectations, and the kids performed accordingly. So I really want to throw that caveat in there that I don't expect any less from any group of other children. So this is why for me, when you say let's look at a subgroup of students, I expect the same thing. If, if you're getting it out of that group, I expect the same thing out of this group. And that's how I feel about it. So I don't feel that there's a need to, because I feel that if the standard is set and we set it at four and we come in at three, we still accomplish more than what we did by setting it at two and coming in at two. And so that's what my, that's what my feelings are about, you know, expectations and et cetera. So that's what I'm concerned about.
But that's a legitimate concern. And expectations are important. I think that's part of why Leslie added stretch goals in here. Measuring the rate of change at 2% and saying we're going to stay at 2% is unacceptable. That's not what we're looking at. But we are looking at remediation. And we're looking at students' learning. And we're looking at working with students and allowing them and supporting them in order to grow. The high expectation should always stay the same, should always stay the same. I agree with you on that. The question at hand, though, is what are those high expectations? The question at hand, though, is what are those high expectations? So if we're not, if we're not doing a standardized test or we're measuring a rate of change, we can set that rate of change at the high expectation level. That's the thing. Because you want to take students, you also want to know that they're accomplishing this. Because if you get a variety of students and you don't know what they've been doing historically, you could set a percentage that they already have achieved. It is possible to do that. We don't want that. What we want to do is make sure that whatever inputs we put in here, however we get to that at the discretion of the superintendent and her staff, that those things will be measurable, that students will actually be different by the time they're done. They'll have a stronger grasp of things. So I don't think we're, I don't think we're on different sides. I think the terminology can be.
Okay, fine. Long as we have the standard across the board. That's all I'm saying. You know, okay? That's it. Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to have a follow-up conversation around that, looking at the historic data for this population and seeing what we could put together. And again, understanding, I think it's important to understand, we do want to stretch, have stretch goals, but we're only allowing a year and this is the beginning of the year. So there's not been the time, the resource alignment and whatnot to do this. That will come. That will be part of the expectation when we do the full plan. All right. In terms, sorry.
Yeah, two, so we're done.
All right. So in terms of the third and final, what is, what do you want to see for the students who are graduating? Currently, you have, it's written as the percentage of four-year graduation cohort students who complete state and district graduation requirements. And just, I'm sorry, I didn't have time to look in this enough. How closely aligned are those?
Answer that question, ask that question again, please, Leslie.
Yeah. How closely are the state and district graduation requirements? Is there much variance between them?
It's the same.
It's the same.
It's the same.
Okay. Great.
But it's, it's always a lag. So we just got this year's graduation, I mean, the numbers are confirmed this year for last year.
But the requirements.
Yeah, requirements.
So I don't know what to, is there another, can, can we use, would you be comfortable with us using your numbers?
So hang on, though, hang on, we're not, we're not quite there yet, Sharon. Hang on. I just wanted to make sure that the state, and you've got it written, a state and district graduation requirements. If there's a need to distinguish between those, I just want to make sure. If it's the same, that, that's fine. Requirements for graduation, is that what you want? Are those requirements what you want for your students? And again, I'll ask this in terms of, is there any expectation around a specific competency that is of interest? Is there any expectation around it or desire to look in on a special group for this as well? This is a board question.
Yeah, that's a good question. I know every, it hasn't changed. Every 12th grader has to have 22 credits to graduate.
The schools that have it historically, if graduation, is there a particular segment of, right? Going back to something you brought up earlier, Leslie, just in terms of a particular population. And I don't know what that looks like, but is there a correlation at all? Something we want to kind of hyper-focus on?
What would that look like, though? We're trying to.
Yeah, that I can't give you.
So let me ask, can we use the summer school information as an indicator that the percentage of students that are graduating from this same group of students graduate on time? Or I think the concerns for our community are that they are college-ready, college and career-ready, okay? That we, that they graduate, but sometimes they have to go to the summer school to get it. And so would, would the focus be reducing the amount of students requiring to go to summer school to get their graduation rate?
So you're, it sounds like you're looking at an interim.
That's an interim?
Maybe, yeah. If you're focused, if you want to look back at who went to summer school, like, in order to get there?
But that's the only, that's the group of students that ultimately are the ones who are not making it through the process, is what I'm saying.
I think the district has been really good at providing the board with information on students who are at risk. So if we could find out, right? Those kids who have been at, who are at risk, as you know, by the time kids finish the eighth grade, they're going to the ninth grade, that, you know, they have, you know, certain mindsets. And if they're not going to go to high school, we're going to know that because they're not going to come. But when you have kids in high school from the ninth grade throughout to the 12th grade, they're in it to graduate. But some of them are at risk. And so I know, you know, being on this board, the district has shown us how many kids did not have, like, say, for example, it's 20, you need 22 credits. So if you're in the 10th grade, you only have five, you're at risk. Or you, you know, and so on. And so how do the district combat that? You know, providing information. I know my, my last child was at risk, as far as I was concerned. Might be less. But what I'm saying is, he had a hard time passing, I think it was Global Studies. So he went to high, he went to summer school. He didn't pass. He passed the grade. But anyway, what I, my point is, the district should have that information.
So that again would be a indicate, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We do have an early warning indicator system that identifies just those things where our OSA department is tracking certain indicators. And as students advance grade levels, there are more indicators, you know, more responsibility and accountability for the students. So we could look at tracking indicators and ensuring, because the fewer at-risk indicators you have, the more likely you are to be positioned to graduate.
But so my question would be, does the board want to concentrate that goal on college or high school graduation on at-risk students?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes, I would say yes. And the way we would determine at-risk students, could you define that for us? How, do you, what are you using? Do you have a tool for that?
So we have a system of gold, silver, bronze, based on how many warning indicators each student has. So there's, I think, 18 different indicators. Gold means you have two or less indicators. Silver, I believe, is less than five. And then anything over that is bronze. So what we're discussing with principals all summer is how often you progress monitor the bronze indicators and what supports we have available to intervene as early as second grade with, based on second grade indicators, to try to get them through to graduation.
Wait a minute. You can go all the way back to second grade?
Yes. We have indicators for every grade that will start with.
Wow, that's beautiful.
Yeah. That's good information. Okay. So then.
So then that's getting back to the point I was making before, right? I'm not talking about, I get where Leslie's coming from, where you need to have the data in order to be able to measure. But I needed to know exactly what you just said, that there is a measurement system where the indicators are in place. And then you focus on those children and you, those supports are part of that process. So I wasn't getting that from the, from what I was seeing before. I was just hearing the testing of the data and the data. So if we have that to reflect on with the risk indicators that you already have, then that's, that to me is a perfect example of where we should be focusing on. Because those support are in place. And it also determines what's happening in the household, dealing with the whole child. This is just with everything. I was being frustrated for the last 20 minutes, like, oh, I guess we're just going to test and that's it. That's, that I needed to know that that's amazing and thank you. Like, that we need, I needed to know, we would look back to second grade with those indicators. That's awesome.
Perfect. Thank you. Exactly.
That's a good pathway also for when we're starting to do the deeper work. I mean, that's a good area right there. My question was just about what, what constitutes graduation requirements? Are we talking about solely region's diploma or the multiple pathways available to students?
So we, graduation is includes the pathways.
Okay.
Except the local diploma doesn't count. But the pathways count. So like, you do the four plus one or one of those other pathways, that's a yes. It would just be like the local diploma that doesn't count.
And how do we handle, how would we handle those in this data? I guess is the question. It's not one I need you to answer. It's just in general, I want to put that out there that's important.
You're talking about the local diploma? There's very few.
There's very few. Okay.
So what constitutes the local diploma?
It's mostly attendance, though.
The local? No, it has to do with exams.
Oh, and safety.
Yes.
But we can exclude children in this, this one, in this particular one. So we have to, so do the, do those group of children also, is this, this risk indicator part of their portfolio too?
The risk indicator is for every student in the district. We count everybody and look at everybody's risk. I'm talking about graduation rate calculation.
That's all I was asking about. So because the percentage depends on the graduation rate calculations.
But the gold, silver, bronze is the whole district.
That's, that's something, that's why I said going forward, I think that's, that's a really important indicator. The problem with some of the graduation requirements is when you're dealing with folks who may have issues ever getting to that standard. And there are ways in which that we can forget what their needs are and not necessarily need that. And particularly when we're talking about special needs and we're talking about transition outcomes, because success then isn't necessarily measured exactly in that graduation, but in what their transition outcomes are. In other words, are they able to work? Are they able to have independent living skills? All of those pieces. I don't think that's something we can necessarily solve right now. But I need us to be aware of it when we're looking at what those measurements are and what those interventions are. Because what we don't want to have is a situation where we're not aware of it and we're not thinking about what the supports for those folks are too. Because then they get left out of the initiatives that are on the table. And that's, it's just, it's a really critical piece to be mindful of. And I don't think it's something that most people know about graduation and how graduation works for various people.
So how would we frame that? How would we frame that goal?
So I personally like the way that goal is written. I think everything that we've discussed about the warning system is critical and should be, maybe be worked in as guardrail, interim goals. Because the way this is written, I think it's, it should, those students that are at risk are the reason why our graduation rate isn't, right now, 87.14%. And if we were able to better reach those at-risk students, that's what's going to then cause an uptick in our graduation rate. So that's my personal opinion. I like the way it's written as is.
Can you read that goal, please?
The percentage of four-year graduation cohort students who complete state and district graduation requirements will increase from 77.47% in June 2021 to 87.14% by June 2025.
So what do you think, board?
Uh, like, I would defer that to the superintendent. Does that work for you?
That's your goal. Hang on, is y'all's goal?
No, no. The reason I'm asking is this is a one-year goal.
Yeah.
A stretch, that's.
Okay, this is.
That's 20 to 2025.
Right, no, no, no. This planning period is a one-year period. When we start talking about.
So we can just talk about the number because there's 83. We'll just lower it because that's.
That's a huge stretch, yes.
It would be the 83.79. It's all over, right?
So currently, just to get clear on this, currently, the graduation rate last year was 80.57%.
Laura, do you have that specific data? We just pulled it today. I didn't.
So the unofficial graduation rate for this year is 79.1. And we talked about amendment.
That's before?
That's.
Before summer school or after?
After summer school.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So I think if y'all want to tack on unofficial, official?
Unofficial, right.
Unofficial.
And you want to, I was going to say, do you want to measure the official or unofficial?
We don't get to official, it's too far out.
Okay. So as much detail as you can get. Yep.
But if we use the summer school results, when my evaluation happens in May or June, we won't have this data.
So does the 79.1% does include the summer school?
It does.
Then can you get a number that doesn't? I guess that would be our starting point.
76%?
Okay. And we can tighten, I don't want to, yeah, let's tighten that up. Let's like, for real, for real, get settled with all of that data so the board has an understanding. 76% and it looks like you were on about a 3.5% year over year for already what you're projecting on this.
So, so I guess the question for me is, is that if we don't include something in here about, okay, so maybe that's the interim, interim goal. So she talks about the early warning indicator. Okay, I got you.
Yep. Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So just what I'm suggesting, and again, I would prefer to get a little more air in this thinking and tight on the numbers, but it looks to be about a 3.5% goal.
Okay.
Does, how does that seem? That tracks with what you had on this sheet.
Yeah, we're not trying to deviate from the sheet.
Yeah, that's reasonable, I think.
If we didn't, if we didn't get the goal, we need to drop down. I, I'll be honest with you. Can I just say this? When she presented these goals, I thought, first of all, coming off of COVID, it was very ambitious. Because we did not have a benchmark on where our children were with COVID. And so I thought it was very courageous to jump out and, and at the time, I.
I agree, you did say that.
You did. And I talked to you about it. Because we know that certain things happened during COVID. But she did not adjust it for COVID. She took the numbers and moved forward. And so to her credit, okay, but, and that was courageous, okay? But I don't think that, and I don't mean to disrespect to this, that it was realistic then, that you were, that, you know, that we were not going to have, no, yeah, that we're going to automatically just grow. And so I just wanted to throw that out there. I just want you to know that that was recognized, okay, from the beginning. Okay. So for me, as a school district, if we can at least minimally keep at least an 80% graduation rate for the next year, you know, I would, I could, I could be comfortable with that. It's not what I want, but I think I could be comfortable with the fact that we're at 79 now and we still are struggling.
76. So just, just to be clear, we're going to be tracking the unofficial because it doesn't, just for this year.
Yeah, but next year, the number will show 79 because that will be released by then, by the time.
Yeah, but.
Right.
So it'll be unofficially increasing again when it comes to.
Right. As long as you stick to the same number.
Yeah.
You don't change it midstream, then you just keep keeping unofficial.
Yeah.
For comparison.
Yeah. I mean, it'll, it'll be indicated in the goal, so we're not going to leave any of the detail out. Okay. All right. So again, just wanted, these are, you know, the, the purpose of this work is to have something so that a year from now, you as a board have a valid, objective, student outcome-based metric to measure the superintendent's evaluation.
All right, good.
We are, our conversation today was about getting very smart goals built around literacy, numeracy, and our graduation rate. We owe some work in terms of the data there and the numbers, so we need to come back with you, but also interims that you agree will be predictive. So the, the purpose of the interims that you would be looking at and data she would bring you throughout the year would be things that you would look at, that she says, these are going to, and you have to be good with this, these will be predictive of hitting the goal. would be things that you would look at, that she says, these are gonna, um, and you have to be good with this, these will be predictive of hitting the goal. So those are things you would be looking at to get there. And again, this is our baby step into the real practice. What I want to ask you now, and I will make my case again to be very succinct with this. Um, it appears in, in terms of guardrails, do you feel that, um, do you feel, there is a, um, an understanding from your understanding of the community and the work that was done and put into this, um, information. What we took off of the, um, took off of the goal was something that was centered on, um, student intervention systems and support. So, would you like to, and, and the point, well, the thing we have need to do with the guardrails is to, we'll have to develop interims for those as well. What are the metrics going to be to show you that this is happening? And so you had a, um, you know, if I, if you're looking to keep that one, I would recommend doing something with the student support intervention system, guardrail, and, uh, just track that with what you have. And so, let me know your thinking on that.
Um.
Number three, go three.
Bullet number three. Leslie, are you saying that we would keep the rest of the guardrails as they are written and just look at modifying that one?
Um, no, I think that's up to you, I think you all need to look at those and see, are, are those specific things that must be in front of her this year? And are you going to have, um, the time to track the progress towards those guardrails?
Um, I think we need to reduce them, uh, at least, I think we need to focus in, I, I think that we should focus in on the three goals and, and tying them into a guardrail.
So, three guardrails.
Three guardrails. It's not that we're not going to look at this, but I think what's, what's realistic is, is that if our priority is on, uh, and we're, we're streamlining for the superintendent that we streamline these guardrails as well. I need feedback on that, though.
I just really look at, um, look at them, how they're worded, um, the first two at least end up with directives. And.
Well, that's.
The point of a guardrail, again, is to have an overarching value that you need protected. So in the first one, clearly, there's a desire to protect equity, and I think hitting these populations a little bit in the first two goals.
Does it?
Well, we'll help with that, but you've also pulled out, um, learning and support resources designed to meet the needs of student population. So that's, um, about ensuring that students have what they need in every school.
But it, okay, so, let's do this. The guardrail says, align resources equitably. The superintendent will not allow any school in the district to be without learning and student support resources that is designed to meet the needs of all, and I put, uh, it says, needs of the student population.
In all.
In that school. And I thought it should be district, I didn't think it should say schools, I thought it should say district. And I thought it said the needs of all student population, and I thought that was enough. But I'm not quite clear if that's really a, a good guardrail. That's what I'm struggling with, uh, Leslie. Is that, it's just the top, first, the first sentence, first three lines, is that sufficient?
I am asking if you feel that your, what you wrote into your goals was a sufficient way to try and, um, get to a big equity issue in the district.
No, so it should say economic disadvantage, it should have spelled that out.
You said that in the goal, those are in the goals.
Right, but.
Yeah.
What she's asking is, do we even need to say this if we've already focused in on that, uh, student body? That then all of that should be a part of it? In other words, you need to align resources in order to get that outcome for students who are identified as economically disadvantaged, correct? Okay.
Is it, is that right, Leslie?
Um, I am just having a problem understanding what you actually mean by this first sentence. What you intend for her to do.
I think it's almost like a wish list, it's very bad. It, it's almost like, fix it, you know, it just seems very directed and, and handle all this and make it right for everybody. And we're not, we're not giving her the, you know.
Okay, so.
I, I just feel like this is, this is a lot for, it's.
But we didn't.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that's, that's exactly, if we're going to agree to this, to me, I'm not, I'm, I would like to figure out a way to make that number one not sound so.
Well, I don't know that we need to have all five, which I think is what it was.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm saying too, I, I agree with you, that if it's already kind of baked into the goals, then we're just reiterating, get it done, which to me is like.
But it's a non-negotiable, that's what the guardrail is. So the non-negotiable is, this in regards to math and literacy, that, uh, students of, that are economically disadvantaged will not, this will not happen to them, or this will not be allowed to happen. Is that right? Thou shall not allow students who are. That's what it turns out to be, look, that's what, that's what, that's, so, I, that's where we're struggling. I struggle with the guardrail, because in the community, the community values are, we want to make sure that the children, the least of these are reading and getting math, and that's what the community wants.
So.
They're getting their education with math.
So, the, again, guardrail would be a community value that must be protected in pursuit of the goal.
Mm-hmm.
So what is the value you're trying to get to, if you're trying to get to?
So no child who is economically disadvantaged, um, the superintendent will not allow any child who is economically disadvantaged to, uh, not read at least at level two.
Okay, but that's your goal, and I'm saying, so, is there a value that has to be protected in pursuit of that goal? In pursuit of the goals you've laid out, is there a value that you must articulate need to be protected?
So one way to think about this would be, the most inappropriate way to achieve a goal? And what do we want to protect to make sure it doesn't, I'm not saying you do it, I'm just saying that's the way you conceive of it? And how does that align with the community values? That's, that's the piece of it, so.
So.
If the community, so, based on your listing for Dr. Williams, what feedback did you get from stakeholders that prompted this, this guardrail?
Um, that, um, instructional time in the classroom is valued, it's important, it needs to be maximized from the start of a bell till, you know, the bell rings for students to change to the next subject. That, um, we would have certified teachers, you know, in front of our students as much as possible. You know, we were experiencing a transportation crisis when I went out that was impacting the ability to have extended learning time opportunities for children in spite of the learning loss that they had experienced coming off of COVID. So all of those were things that I heard that talked about making sure that in every one of our classrooms, we had resources that were, um, meaningful, engaging, and culturally relevant, that, you know, reflected the children, that learning time would be maximized, the instructional teach time would be maximized. The resources would be there, and we would have highly qualified teachers and professors.
So how does this resonate? I think the question then is, given conversations the board has had, board members have had with their communities, does that resonate with what we've heard from our stakeholders?
I immediately went to, when I saw this number one being referred to guardrail, I immediately went to, some schools have, some schools do not. This is, this is prevalent in this school, why not this school? And that, to me, was what I was looking for, and the answer you just gave, Anne, was do you hear that? Because you broke it down in a way, that's their broad statement, but you actually broke it down in what you said. And for me, I think, number one, I'm going to bite half of the things you said, so that I can respond to the community in a much better way. But I, I think the actual just align resources equitably can just be open to so much interpretation. So this guardrail, to me, is, it's not confusing, it's just too deep. And how do you make this a guard, how is it aligned when there's so much tied to those three?
And what you shared, I'm sorry, is absolutely true. I went to all different zip codes, um, you know, E and L, West Side, South Buffalo. Um, I met with different socioeconomic status, you know, families, stakeholders, um, met with students, you know, principals. And the goals that are in the, the five by twenty-twenty-five catalog, if you will, were really the big-ticket things that I kept hearing over and over. And so for this guardrail, whether I was in an affluent area of the city or if I was in an area where there were very few, um, English as a first language, families who were speaking to me, or if I was in an area where the socioeconomic status was very low and there was a lot of poverty. They all expected that no matter what school their children went to, what classrooms, they kind of all want the same thing, which was for their children to have highly qualified teachers who care about them. You know, their classrooms look a certain way, and that they have every opportunity instructionally to be successful.
Um, can I propose something real quick? So superintendent will not allow any school in the district to be without the learning and student support resources necessary to meet the needs of each school's specific population.
Thank you. I said it the same way, I said it the same way.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, I'm just rewording it a little bit, I think it's, yeah, it is pretty good. I want to take the back end off it, because again, I do think that that goes into your, it's more preaching and statement-y. But I think this one, what you're describing and the things that you just talked about, um, superintendent, are probably going to be good, you know, gauges. So what you would do for an interim, um, some of the things you just spoke about might be a good way to, um, to have, uh, the, this, or the board understand that that guardrail is being held up. The cultural. Yes.
Can you read that guardrail again, and for the align resources equitably?
Um, yes, so, the superintendent will not allow any school in the district to be without the. To be without the learning and student support resources.
Okay, that are available?
Necessary for.
Necessary.
Each school's student population. I think I just reworded exactly what you read, I'm sorry. I don't think there was any big change there, but.
It isn't.
No, you said something different first.
You said, you said school specific.
The specific needs of the student population, if you want to put that in. So superintendent will not allow any school in the district to be without the.
Learning and student support resources.
I think you said without instructional something first. Thought that was a term.
I didn't put instructional in.
He put, he put learning.
Learning is here, yep.
Doesn't mean that this still wasn't.
The necessary learning and student support resources designed to meet the specific needs of each school's population.
Thank you.
It was, um, I think, putting specific needs, um.
Yes, yeah, okay, because this, this, it's, okay, and the rest of this disappears.
Right.
Yes, and now.
So it's the same one, it's just adding two words in it, necessary, uh, specific and necessary students, necessary, that's what's in here.
And the rest we eliminate.
So, that's fine. All right.
Okay, fantastical.
Second one, um, superintendent will not allow cultural nonresponsivity to impact student experiences or staff effectiveness.
Kathy, did you read that down?
That's just what it is, so I would, oh, were you talking about the first one?
No, I just wanted to make sure Kathy had it.
Yep, second one, I mean, I would just go with that, if, I mean, are you comfortable going with that? Take off the second piece, all students must, because again, you're telling her what to do at that point. So that can be her response to it. But, in terms of a board guardrail, the value you're protecting is cultural responsiveness, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, culturally responsive experiences and staff effectiveness, okay? The student support intervention system.
I, I don't want to change it, I don't want to remove it, that's for sure.
No, 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 but just go back and look at the, how you stated that goal. Okay, what, I, I, what is, superintendent will not allow out-of-school long- or short-term suspension for students that are not directly aligned, um, can somebody tell me exactly what that means?
Hey, that reminds me.
Yeah, I don't understand.
So we have a code of conduct document, and it spells out level one infractions and what's allowable, which is usually that students will visit a student support team member, psychologist, social worker, or counselor to, you know, restore and address conflicts. Then there's the level two, where you may bring parents in for a parent conference. And it's only when students commit certain infractions that an out-of-school short-term suspension can happen at level three. And if it's a very serious offense, and there's a list of what those are, then it goes up to a level four, which is, um, a long-term out-of-school suspension. We don't expel, what the most serious thing we can do is the long-term suspension. So for things like if you brought a, you know, an armed gun or something like that into school, that would be a level four. So what we were trying to get at is that principals were not giving level four consequences for level one infractions.
Okay. Okay, so, long or short-term suspensions that aren't, that don't come under the, um, so does this, does this sentence say exactly that?
Can I offer a suggestion?
Yes.
So, the superintendent will not allow out-of-school long inch and/or short-term suspensions for students who have not committed a level three or a level four offense. Directly aligned to the Buffalo, et cetera.
Okay.
And, and you want to keep, keep the other?
Uh, yeah, I would.
Okay.
Because that's where you determine the levels from the, the code of conduct.
Okay, so what do you think? Read, read it, please.
The superintendent will not allow out-of-school long and/or short-term suspensions for students that have not committed a level three or four offense. As defined by the Buffalo Board of Education approved twenty-twenty-three Code of Conduct document.
What if, for me, the Code of Conduct document, I think, should be moved up? So the student, the superintendent will not allow, uh, for students that have not committed a, the level three, level four according to Code of Conduct document to be suspended long and short-term instead of like the suspension piece coming first? Like, for me, that's confusing, because then I'm, it, it's immediately bringing me to the Code of Conduct before the suspension. You're referring to the Code of Conduct as to the why suspensions happened if you put that first before suspensions. Does that make sense to anybody, my fifteen?
I liked the way Larry wrote that.
Okay.
What, what you're doing?
Never mind, never mind, it's just me, so I, never mind.
Well, what I don't want us to do is change these too much, because it's the exact same thing, she wrote it. All we doing is enhancing it at this point. But when we go back to doing this. But when we go back to doing this from our September, June, to June, then, then we will have more input and more conversation on stuff like that. Because just keep it simple. The, but does anything need to be in there about the multi-tier system of support? We just talked at the beginning about the student support resources. So I don't think we need to include that. That needs to, that's, that's it.
Code of Conduct is available for people because you're, you're, you're referencing it and they want to look at it. Just reference it. And you could maybe add, you know.
Okay.
As where they can find it, but it's right there.
What'd you say?
It ends with Code of Conduct.
Yes.
All right, next one.
Next. A question about this one, and again, it has to be, you know, like, is this in the school district's purview? So think about in those terms. Superintendent will not allow for the silencing of marginalization or silencing of voices of students, families, and or community at large on supporting achieving the goals of the district.
That should be automatic.
Explain to me what that means. I'm sorry.
Well, that's an automatic process. Superintendent will now allow for marginalization of students.
So when I went out and did the listening tour, I heard often that folks did feel that their voices.
Were not heard.
Were not heard. That was a big, that the district had not been transparent in things that were happening and that there had not been opportunities for them to be heard. And, you know, I heard that from business leaders. I heard that from families. So, and students, and students. And, you know, I met with students not only who were on a roll, but students who had been getting suspended a lot. They had a lot to say. And so they were looking for opportunities where their voices could be heard.
Okay, just gonna, let me have those sounds. Superintendent will not allow. The cultural linguistic wealth value assets. And voice, yep, yep.
In one of the documents that you sent us early on in the reading, there was just some example guardrails. And I pulled that up just because it popped in my head as the superintendent just explained what this particular guard rail, where it came from. It, it's just that the superintendent will not propose major decisions to the board without first having engaged students, parents, community, and staff, right? So that is making sure that their voices are heard. They have a table and there's conversation that occurs, which I think might be.
Perfect. Share that again, please.
The superintendent will not propose major decisions to the board without first having engaged students, parents, community, and staff.
Major decisions such as?
We don't need to get into deep dives of that, but just, I mean, any big thing, right? Because when, I'm sure, and this is me speculating because I don't know, but you can share that with us. That is of concern, right? Folks felt their voices weren't heard.
Okay. All right, good.
Okay, that's good.
And the final one?
Quick and dirty, the community, superintendent will not allow the district to underutilize community partnerships.
Yeah, that's good.
It's up to the superintendent then to define what underutilized means. So the piece of this is when the board stops writing, the superintendent gets to interpret. So you just got to be clear there.
Say it again, please. Leslie, say it again.
The superintendent will not allow community, in, community partnerships to go underutilized. To be underutilized. It's been a while since I got out of school.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so.
Leslie, thank you so much for assisting in development of the guard rails.
Yeah, I do want to talk about next steps real quick. So we've got some holes to plug on the goals, which we'll get with you Superintendent Williams and figure out when we can get together and look at just the last couple of years data trends so we can get those numbers right. The board, y'all have to make a decision about when you're going to come back and finalize this. He needs to get to work clearly on, on all of this in interims as well. And I wanted to. We also need to set, and this is a just teeny bit of housekeeping, set a leadership team meeting date. I'll get with Will on that. But I just wanted to put that out there in terms of how the, how we're going to start regularly meeting on this process. So a couple of things is the, I appreciate y'all coming to the table on this and sticking with it. Everything the superintendent's going to do depends on the board coming together and being of one mind before she's able to do what she needs to do. But that's really important. So as long as y'all, you know, just keep your head in here. I am, would greatly like the board to consider setting some guardrails for yourselves as we go through this process, specifically one around your adherence to fulfilling the SOFG work. So maybe the next time we meet, we can discuss that. But I think it's really important that y'all, if you have expectations as superintendent, you have them of yourselves and putting it into a guardrail is a way to do that. You're protecting that value for the community. And then in terms of this work getting done with fidelity, I am going to encourage each and every one of you, say for your president who's already done it, to consider participating in one of our cohorts that actually train board members across the nation in this practice. It's like a little master's level class, but it's a completely doable for anybody. And I'll share information with you on that. We start again in February, but the application season is coming up and will close soon. But I, if you're committed to this process, I really want you to consider doing that. It will make everybody's work a lot easier. So, and you can talk to President Sharon about that, so.
So Laura, you also shared today that there's a staff, a, a staff training course as well.
We do. We have, we have a board member cohort, which was beginner board members. We have one for board members who are implementing this process. So that might be well suited for you all. We have one for staff members who are implementing this. So I'll share it with your, I'll share it with Will and all of you and you can spread it around as needed. But again, it's a, it's a really great learning tool for supporting this work, so. But immediately, I want y'all to consider the board guard rail around this work. And I will send an email to connect with you, Dr. Williams, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much, guys. Applaud yourselves, you did good work. Thank you.
So, there you have it. For all of us, we have just a new, a new day, you know, in the Buffalo Public School District with a board that will provide governance and, and our excellence in our district. So we are excited about this. Okay.
Turn me back over to me, I'm sorry. I wasn't trying to be rude. I was just trying to get more clarity on next step and what we should do. So the other part to this meeting is to approve the First Amendment to the Contract of Employment of Dr. Times, the superintendent of our schools. And filed, and board members, you have had a chance hopefully to read the First Amendment to the Contract of Employment for the superintendent. Just to highlight, I'm not going to read it unless you feel it's necessary to read. But the terms of employment, I think it's important to make a note, has been extended a year at this point. And the compensation under, excuse me, term of employment under section 3A will be revised to read that the superintendent's term of employment shall terminate on June 30th, 2026, unless further extended or sooner terminated as herein after provided. And then the second is the compensation. The first sentence of section 7A will be revised to read that the superintendent's base salary for the period from September 1st of 2023 to June 30th, 2024 shall be at the rate of $276,750. Third, all other provisions of this agreement not amended hereby shall continue in all full force and effect during the new term of employment established hereby. So this is, this is the amendment that's being proposed. May I have a motion to accept the amendment? I have two vice presidents, Mr. Scott first and Dr. Kathy Brown second. This is an opportunity to have a discussion. Is there anyone that has anything to say on this or do we move to vote?
Move to vote.
Okay. Mr. Kuzman, the board is prepared to vote at this point.
I'm voting for the First Amendment to the superintendent's contract. How do you vote, Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Carr is absent. Everybody who wishes to excuse, Ms. McKeckin?
Yes.
Ms. McCosey?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
So she is also absent.
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
President Milton Kopp?
Yes.
Motion passes and the First Amendment to the superintendent's contract is approved.
Thank you. Second order of business, point of order, we have two board members who have asked to be excused today. May I have a motion to excuse Terry Shuta and Mr. Tinsford? I saw Cindy, board member Cindy, second, Jennifer McCousey, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The only other thing I would like to bring up at this point is, is that in a recent conversation, it was suggested that it has been many years since the board has had training, one-on-one training on the responsibilities and the roles of a, of a board member. The suggestion has been made that we do a, a dinner retreat with our counsel who handles this, our two counselors, or counsels that will handle this, and that it be done in the month of September. We would go and have dinner and conduct business and receive the training. It is particularly useful because of the roles that we are required in the fiduciary. We cannot just do everything that we want to do without having liabilities exposed. And so we did this before and it's been probably about five years since we've done it since then. And so it's, I feel that it's time. So I'm going to ask Dr. Caressis to come up with a date and time. Ideally might be maybe on a Wednesday night or something. We will have dinner and we will, it will be sponsored by our attorney's office and Nate and attorney will be there and Carl Kristoff will be there. And we will go over the responsibilities of a board member and what we can and cannot do to make sure that we're on the same page.
I'm going to be on vacation the 5th of September to this 18th.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe the 4th, maybe Wednesday of the month.
Or is there work sessions? Or is there work sessions, correct?
But this would be a dinner, this would be a dinner menu. And we would eat and we would talk about it. Typically, the last meeting we did it was an hour, hour and a half at the most. And we just go over New York State guidelines and things like that. So everybody's on the same page.
And fourth week in September, sounds good.
Okay, so we'll see about that, okay? So just giving you the heads up, that's a recommendation from our legal team in order to move the board further up to the next level they need to be at. Okay. All right, so without further ado, may I have a motion to conclude this meeting? Well, of course, you know who's him when up first. And second by Jennifer, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for, for your attentive job over the chat.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Dr. Williams. So.
She's been holding down for everybody.